So you're gonna record this?
Yes, cuz I think I beat you on here and I can do it.
So I could get this from Facebook also besides my phone.
Yeah, but you're here, stay with us.
Yeah, stay right here.
You can't leave.
This is more, this is more interactive here.
Know where you live.
Yeah, I have access to the church database, I can get your address.
You're gonna send the police over, right?
Yeah, well. Instead of a wellness check, it's gonna be a holiness check.
You got it?
Yeah, I think I'm good. Me and Tim are desperate for viewership, right? I said me and Tim, me and Tim are desperate for viewership, right?
How many when we're on?
Give me one second.
So I have a funny story to tell you. I sold, I sold our used cars to Carvana and I, which means that you set up an appointment and they come, so the woman who's coming calls me and she's very nice, it's about, and she calls at about eight o'clock in the morning and I've set it up for nine thirty. And I said, um, well, I said nine thirty is still good, is it still good for you? And she said, yes. And I said, well, don't come early. Because I said, you know, I said, I'm kind of a big deal, I'm on TV until nine thirty.
Okay, we are all sad.
So how do, what do we call you, Mr. Big Deal?
Yes, Reverend Big Deal, there you go. All right, so let's get going. I want to welcome everybody to our fifth week of our Lenten Bible study from the Allen Park Presbyterian Church. We are, uh, we've been working our way through Lent and, um, today we're gonna be talking about atonement. Uh, and atonement will, I have, I do have a PowerPoint that we can use. But more so than anything else, we are very scriptural based in our last four, looking at scripture, reading scripture. Um, and atonement is a theory that talks about what, what was Christ doing on, on the cross? Right? What was the purpose of Christ on the cross? Now, I need you to think about that, but I want you to put it into some context before we ever look at anything or talk about anything. And that's this. We are, we tend to parrot what we're taught. So, I asked that question and I'm sure that many of you will can have an answer saying, oh, I know exactly what was going on. And I, and I'll tell you that that comes from your own context, it comes from your, uh, your denominational background. It comes from the cultural background that was at the time that you received that teaching, right? Um, and I'm not saying that it's changed over time, but our understanding of how we do that and, and it probably, whatever Christ was doing is greater than anything that we can, that we can, um, even imagine. So it does, it does all of these things and more. But the purpose here is to talk about, to think about, really on some deep levels, you know, what was going on there and what, and, and so I look forward to this, I really do. So I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share a screen, we, I've got some slides, but I'm gonna come back and forth, I love this to be, I'd love this to be more of a discussion and, um, and, but we'll see what happens with this. And I'll go. And I'm gonna go to full screen. There you go. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the Merriam-Webster. Um, we're looking at, what is atonement? We want to define what atonement is. So Merriam-Webster has, has some of them, tells us how to say it, right? And it's a reputation of, for an offense or an injury. So, and ultimately it has to have satisfaction for the person who was injured, right? And we quite often, um, we hear about atonement, but it's almost, in our, in our parlance, it's almost always, in a religious aspect, but it doesn't need to be, right? It can be an illegal, uh, aspect. You know, if you, uh, if you harm somebody through, through your act of intentionality or even, um, uh, by accident, um, you can be held liable for that. And then you make, you need to, you know, you can be held liable and that also means that you have to make a repartee, a reputation, you know, to somebody for that. And our whole legal system is based on the fact that it needs to be fair, right? It needs to make things, it makes, needs to make things right. So that, that sometimes it's not only making things what, the way that they were, but sometimes there's additional funds that are paid for pain and suffering that somebody might have. So, but again, we usually hear the word atonement more in religious aspects than anything else. So here's, you know, it can be as, it's, um, he wanted to find a way to make atonement for his sins, so to he's done something wrong. Who's he done something wrong against? Well, obviously it's God, so they're saying, I wanna, I wanna make it right with God. Which leads us to that second one, which is the reconciliation, right? Reconciliation is rejoining of God and humankind. And in Christian, then we say it's through the sacrificial death of Jesus Christ. So we've said that it's a way to make things right again. And here we're saying that it's a sacrificial, it's a sacrificing death. Now, atonement uh, from Christian science, the reason why I put this in there is that they have a very interesting take on it. It says that atonement exemplifies the human oneness with God. Now, I put that in there for a reason. Right? It exemplifies a human oneness with God. It means that the natural state of affairs would be that God and humankind are linked. But there's no separation between them. Think about that, we'll get to it. And then we have this obsolete one, which if we were back, if we were back in, um, uh, the eighteen hundreds and somebody used atonement, it, it would have been commonly known to say that, that, well, that has to do with reconciliation. And that's important because when we look at our modern, uh, contemporary interpretations of the Bible, we don't see atonement in the Bible much, but what we do see is we see a lot of the word of reconciliation. And really it's used interchangeably and, and when we read, when we read the Bible, if we see, if we see our reconciliation. All right. So, but we're talking in terms of God in, in church and religion. So we have a, a more precise definition that we use. And it says that it's the atonement refers to the needed reconciliation, there's that word again, between sinful mankind and the Holy God. And this reconciliation is possible through the atoning sacrifice of Jesus Christ. And we can look at some scripture, which we will, especially in Romans. And we'll see that, and, and there is an argument to be made that this reconciliation of God and humankind is the Bible's central message. That important.
Central message?
Bible.
Wow.
Could I ask a question, right?
I'd love to hear a question, yeah.
Reparation. I, when I was thinking about that part, my thought was that God was defining what would be acceptable to him as an atonement though for what we've done. And, and so I, I, I remember one time that, that, uh, in scripture where I think Jesus made the comment that I'm gonna paraphrase it because this is how it was said, but, uh, basically you don't wanna get on the wrong side of God when he's angry. Uh, what, whatever, uh, that anger is, uh, is, uh, something that's very, I don't know what word I'd be wanting to use, but then begs the question, did God say that this atonement, he's defining the, the atonement, he's defining what needs to be done? Is that what basically the reparation is? He's defining?
Yeah, the, uh, reparation would be in the legal sense of atonement, saying that it's not, it's not, uh, it's not just making, so in other words, if somebody broke into your house and stole a hundred dollars, right? Giving you a hundred dollars wouldn't, wouldn't, um, legally, they say, well, wait a second, what about the window that was broken? What about, um, these things? And then what about the pain and the suffering that I had? So maybe, you know, they say, hey, look, we're gonna, you should be paid a thousand dollars for that, for that. Um, so the reputation, reparation needs to be something that sets it right. Not just payback, but sets it right. And ultimately, the only person that can make the determination if it's set right is God. And, uh, and God's pretty, we're gonna see here in a little bit, that God, uh, when he set up in the Old Testament, he sets the laws, right? And, and he's pretty clear about what, um, what's required, um, to make, or to make things right, uh, when, when there's sin. And we use this word sin and it's really a loaded term. And I hate to use it. And hate's a strong word, but I hate to use it because, um, uh, it brings, sin, when you use the word sin, it, you know, we say, well, you're a sinner. Well, we're all sinners, right? But it also brings an awful, an awful lot of heavy judgment. And I think, and I found that that keeps people away from God and away from church and away from the good parts of church. So when, I always like to say are separate, we're separated from God. Well, that's what sin is, sin is separation from God. And, um, we can argue about why that separation is there. In the art, you know, the original sin that we see in Genesis is Adam and Eve. And that they, that they, um, um, that Adam and Eve, um, obeyed, they had the run of the garden, everything was perfect, they didn't have to work. Their only job was to name everything that was in the garden. And God said, and you can have everything, except don't eat the fruit of that tree that's in the middle of the garden. And what happens is that they're tempted, right? And so we see the snake, which we can say is Satan, Satan's the great tempter. And says, and it doesn't, it basically says, well, why wouldn't God want you to be, have all the knowledge? Right? Why wouldn't? You know, wouldn't you think that he's given you all these other things? Don't you think he'd wanna give you everything? And so, you know, they, through guile, they go ahead and they do it. And all of a sudden, what happens? Well, their, they, their eyes are opened and they notice that we're naked. Right? They never noticed that before, it wasn't important. But all of a sudden now, um, th- these new set of lenses has been put on them and all of a sudden, things that they weren't ashamed about before, they're ashamed about now. God says, hey, wait a second. Where are you? What's going on? And then when they do come out, they've now covered themselves, you're all, and he knows, he says, hey, why'd you cover yourself? Because now they're, they, they see things in a different way. And it's not necessarily the right way. So, um, they, they're cast out east of, of Eden, right? And they have to work by the sweat of their brow for everything, food's no longer just given to them. So that's the, what we call the original sin, the original brokenness, disobedience of God. And that, that is, that, that separation has existed from that time. Now, different denominations look at it different ways. We are part of the reformed tradition and the reformed tradition says that we are incapable of, um, we are incapable of, of following God's guidance alone, right? That we can only do that through the Holy Spirit, it's only through God's grace that that Holy Spirit is given to us. But left to our own devices, right? We will, we will, uh, kind of pull inward and do only what's good for ourselves. And, and what we consider to be good, um, might be taken away from other people, but, but it's ensuring our safety. So, um, total depravity is what it's called, right? That, that's what, that's what man will fall back into unless we keep our spiritual selves alive, right? And then that, that acts as a counterbalance and pulls us away. But it's not just us, it's the whole world, right? The whole world was thrown into this. So when we look at the world and we say, wait a second, uh, we begin to die the day that we were born, right? I have more gray hair now than when I joined you guys a year ago. And, um, and you know, so we're just, we're just working down the road and we eventually, we know where it ends up, right? Well, that's a physical limitation that has been put on this world, but it doesn't exist in, in God's kingdom. Sickness, disease, all of these things, right? Um, death, that's all part of being separated from God. So, that's kind of a high level, but, um, when we say that, what, when that statement was made, that atonement, right? This making it right with God can be considered if not the central, one of the central messages and threads that go throughout the Bible, cuz we can see, you know, uh, if you follow along with the devotions, what are we saying? We're saying all that God, through the prophets, pronouncing judgment against the nations because what? They're stiff-necked. Uh, they don't listen to him, they, they make, they go out and they make covenants with other, with other, uh, nations rather than relying on him. So, uh, and then, uh, yeah, please. And then, then, and then in the, um, New Testament, right? We can see that there's some real action of God into this world, right? Through Christ. To, to put, to put a finality into this separation. To offer, you know, to offer this. One of the ways is to look at it is that we can have God and we have people and it's almost like there's, there's this bottomless chasm, right? That exists between them and, and Christ is, is the bridge that comes across and allows that to happen. And we can see that in, um, Jacob's ladder, right? Uh, the story of Jacob when he's sleeping, right? And, and he has this dream and he sees, he sees this ladder that comes from the earth to the heavens and he sees people going up and down. Right? So that even in the days of the Old Testament, it's how do we, how do we, uh, how do we connect? You know, this, this God who seems so distant, but yet loves us so much. And that we can see that, that one of the ways that he does that is through Jesus Christ. All right. Questions?
So if they never would have been tempted, the world would have been so different and maybe Jesus would have never been our thing?
Jesus existed from the very beginning, so it, what, Jesus wasn't created for that, but Jesus coexisted with God the Father and the Holy Spirit from the very beginning.
Well, the Trinity was always there.
Right.
Always.
Right.
Sorry, that's probably an elementary school question, but.
No, 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 not at all. No, it's actually, it's actually, it's actually another Bible study.
All right, good.
So Carrie, I, I'm with you. I, I thought that Jesus came because of the sin in the world. I never thought anything any different, so this is, it was an interesting question, so Jesus was always.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, well, a couple of things that we can look at. Number one, in the, in the, in Genesis, we, maybe we should go.
The Gen-, this Genesis story always makes me uncomfortable cuz it's always the what ifs, what ifs, why didn't you just stay away from it? That one thing, you know what I mean? But isn't that how life is for all of us every day, every week? It's the way it is.
Oh, I still would have eaten the apple.
And you would have threw it at the side of my head, maybe, I don't know.
Even have gotten the words out yet and I would have been over there picking it, so.
Why? What, what would have, what would have? You just could, to, to have that knowledge?
No, being told she couldn't do it, where's her mother's on here?
Yeah, that's it.
See, I would have thought that Jesus got brought out cuz, you know, bring out the big guns, you know what I mean? Because you guys need to figure this out. So it's interesting to find out, cuz I've heard, you know, that the Trinity was from the beginning, but then how did Jesus get in there? You know, like what was he before he came? You know what I'm saying? Just like the Holy Spirit, maybe.
Well, if, if he had been, he was there at the beginning, from the beginning, like you said, but if the, if they hadn't eaten that apple, we wouldn't, he wouldn't have needed to be sacrificed because we wouldn't have been separated, at least that, at that point.
Right.
Down the road.
If he'd eaten the apple, the Bible would be only one chapter long.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Come along later with temptation. We, mankind would have, humankind would have given in eventually.
Yeah, there would have been, the next time to be separated from the law, the light of God, we would have got involved somehow, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna go do this here, hold on. So this'll, this'll, this'll be fun. All right, we're looking at Genesis. Genesis one, in the beginning, God created the heavens. Notice that that's plural. Right? And the earth. Now, the earth was formless and empty, darkness was over the surface of the deep. And the spirit of God was hovering over the waters. So, traditionally we come back and we've said that it's God, right? Here's the spirit right there, the spirit of God was hovering over the waters. And we say Jesus was, is living water, so that's, that's Jesus in the beginning. Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Oh. And the heavens, the heavens.
Yeah, it's plural for some reason. I don't know the answer to that one. It's just, just one of the odd, just one of the odd.
Where's my third grade Bible, Sheri? I'm looking it up in there.
Right, and here's the interesting, the spirit of God is the, is the, is the wind, right? The wind of God. So it's the, it's the breath of God, literally, it was hovering over the waters. All right.
Waters is Jesus Christ.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, so does that help?
Yep, says it right here in my third grade Bible, created the heavens and the earth.
Oh, yeah, it's always heavens, it's, it is that way.
I never noticed that before.
All right. So anyway, and then the Adam and Eve thing, we could go in, that could be a whole day, day thing on its own, so.
All right, sorry for the, for.
No, 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 it was a good question. I, I mean, cuz if these fundamental things, if we don't, if we don't get them, then.
I'm always learning something new, Pastor, thank you. Thank you, Carrie, for your question that led to the answer.
Yeah, you know me, I don't mind answering anything or asking anything.
All right, here we go. All right, so there was three sections of Romans that were mentioned there, so we're gonna jump to those real quick. So Romans is a letter from Paul. It's, uh, okay, Sheri's favorite. So, letter from Paul that was written very, very late in his career, um, probably the last letter that he's written. He never makes it out of Rome. Right? He's wants to come to Rome when he writes this letter because he wants a jumping off point so that he can do a third missionary journey, he's done two. And he's concentrated in what they called Asia Minor, which is Turkey and Greece. And Cilicia, that, that area, that's what that called, um, and he wants to go all the way, he wants to go over to where Spain is. And, uh, so, but he needs a jumping off spot to do that, he wants it to be Rome. He hasn't had anything to do with this church in Rome. But, um, he is, sends this letter because he wants to introduce himself. And lucky for us is it's the longest letter that he's ever written. And it also tells us a wonderful amount about how he understands what Christ does. And did. So, um, it's very valuable from that standpoint because we can go back and through his letter, we can understand what the early, the earliest church, you know, thought about, um, this, this, this death and resurrection of Christ. So here we are in Romans three, it said, and Paul says this, God presented Christ as a sacrifice of atonement. This is the only place where atonement appears in the New Testament in modern English, right? The rest of it, it talks about reconciliation. As a sacrifice of atonement, uh, thorough, uh, through, I don't know why that A is there, that shouldn't be there, through the shedding of his blood to be received by faith. He did this to demonstrate his righteousness because in his forbearance, he had left the sins committed beforehand unpunished. So, this is Paul saying that he sheds that Christ is a sacrifice of atonement to make things right through God, he does it through the shedding of his blood, and we're gonna see that, that's right out of the, the Judean beliefs of the Old Testament. But he's also saying that we need to receive that in faith, right? That we need to believe in that in order for it to be effective for us. And why did he do it? He did this to demonstrate that he was, that, you know, Christ was perfect, he was righteous. And because he does it, right? Because the, the sins of the past have been unpunished, he's paying the price for sins of people in the past. All right. So this is, this is really important because this is the earliest explanation of what, of what people thought that Christ was doing. And it's important to understand this because there's a lot of people that wanna change the story of the atonement. And, and, you know, and we'll talk about that towards the end of tonight here if we get the chance, but, um, you know, it's by its nature, it was a very violent event. And, and when we look at that, we can get uncomfortable because we can say, well, wait a second, do we have a, you know, is our God violent? Does, does our God require violence? Because that, that kind of does, doesn't, that doesn't really line up real well with the loving God that we, that we all like to talk about, right? And there's an answer for that too, that we can get to. We're gonna go to the second, the second one here, this is Romans, chapter five, and it's verses nine through eleven. So a little bit further on in the letter, and Paul says this, since we have now been justified by his blood, justified means is that we have been recognized, right? That we're at least, that we're, if, if we're shooting at a target, we're at least on the paper. Right? We've been justified, we've been lifted up so that, uh, we are now, we're now at the altitude where we can start to really interact uh, and do the things that God expects of us. Since we've been justified by his blood, Christ's blood, how much more shall we be saved from God's wrath through him? For if, while we were God's enemies, we were reconciled to him through the death of his son, how much more, having been reconciled, shall we be saved through his life? Not only is this so, but we also boast in God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have now received reconciliation. So, that's a lot of words. So, let's just stop and go through it.
Do you think God was viewed more harshly and more powerful, um, and more likely to come after you before Jesus then? Is that how God was probably viewed more? Likely to strike you down by lightning or something?
I think that, all right, so, so I was gonna say this for the big, the, the big ending, right?
I'm sorry.
But, but I'll tell you right now. I've spent a lot of time wondering about, you know, and, and I'm not the only one, there's, there is some, Marcion was a, was a, um, uh, an academic theologian back in six hundred that said, you know what, there's no way that we can reconcile, when we reconcile a checkbook, right? We can do the checks and we make sure that it, it's a, there's no way we can reconcile the God of the Old Testament and the God that's reflected in the New Testament, and he maintained that it was two separate gods. Um, that was, that was declared her, heretic. That was, that was declared heretical, but it just goes to show you from very, very early times, there was people going, wait a second, this seems like two very different things that we're reading here. And, and perhaps you've noticed that too, or thought that, and, and maybe you were saying, well, I can't, I shouldn't really say anything. But you can, and, and really, one of the ways, so, so one of the ways that we can understand it is the fact that, and this is one of the reasons why I love being reformed, right? It's because I do think that when God created us, God created us with every opportunity to fulfill the, the best that he, that, that he, that he expects, that he created, he created us with capabilities, and we only, we have the capacity to do that. But since he's a fair God, he's also given us the capacity to go against him. And he doesn't demand that we love him, right? He expects it, he wants it, but he doesn't demand it, nor does he require it. But the other thing is, is that if we do, then we are, we are participating in, in his expectations. And if we don't, it means that we, that, that, guess what? You're playing dice with the world, right? You, you better, you better watch your back all the time, because you can do really well for quite a while at the expense of others, but sooner or later, somebody else stronger or bigger or more smarter, smarter is gonna come along and knock you off the top of the hill. That's just the way of the world.
A question. In, in Paul explaining this, and going through, am I missing something? He's talking about sins of the past being forgiven, where does it come in for us down the road, sinning?
Okay. Good question. And we'll get to it in just one second. I promise, and if I forget, tell me, so you didn't answer my question. So what we've got is a God that says, all right, you, I want you to be my people, and I'll be your God, here's the rules, and he sets up all these laws. And it does, and remember that it, it is, it's a rough and tumble world. Right? Because the, because the world outside of God, away from God, is a rough and tumble world, very violent. So God is saying, look, I, you know, here, I want you to take this violence and channel it into these things. So he talks about blood sacrifices and things like that. Never does he require a human sacrifice, though. And then, and then, and then what we see with Jesus is he says, you know what? These are my words. "I, I've tried this time and time again, and we always fall in, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put an end to this. And I'm going to, I'm gonna recover my creation to myself by sending myself in Jesus Christ, and I will pay the debt." So that's perfect, which means that it's God that said, I, you know, he looked at it and he wrote the check to cover all that stuff. And from that point on, right? We've now had this opportunity to have this direct relationship with him, and we don't need to live in that, in that violent past, right? Those things, the way that it was, all we have to do is live in the way that it can be, and we do that through faith. So that's how I reconcile the differences between the God that I see in the Old Testament and then the God in the New Testament. Jesus says at the Last Supper, that this cup is my blood. Well, he literally says, this cup is the new covenant. It's my blood shed for the forgiveness of sins. It's the sins of everybody in the past. Can I answer that question?
Where, where, where is, where are you saying that? That's what he said, the sins of the past, but we go on and continue sinning and.
That's right, be, because the, because the death, right, of Christ was perfect, it was, it was for the past, the present, and the future. So God would never require another sacrifice to cover sin. And we're gonna, we'll see in a little bit what, I mean, when we say, what, what about these sacrifices? Well, there's a slide in here that talks about that a little bit. So, but looking at this, Romans five, right? It says, "We've been justified by his blood, how much more shall we be saved from God's wrath through him?" So we saw the wrathful side of God and the way that he treated disrespectful and disobedient people in the past, and, you know, we've been reading Jeremiah. It was seventy years. People, you know, things were destroyed, people's countries were destroyed, they were pulled away from their family, people died. And at, at the end of seventy years, there wasn't anybody coming back to Jerusalem that had left, because everybody had died. So that's, I mean, that's pretty wrathful when we take a look at that. So that's never gonna be done again because of what was done in Christ. And then he says to, to, to make his point, he says, "For while we were God's enemies," right? "While we were still sinners, right? We were being reconciled to him through the death of his son." And then even more than that, since we had been reconciled through that death, then we are saved. Right? We've just been, we've been made whole, we've been pulled up out of the ditch, right? And then we're being saved, salvation, we're being raised up into the heavens through the resurrection. That's what it means.
Could I ask one question about this scripture you have here? When it talks about, "If while we were God's enemies, we were reconciled to him through the death of his son, how much more, having been reconciled, shall we be saved through his life?" And, and the thing that was running through my mind, "Shall we be saved through his life?" is the fact that we now have that I don't know what I wanna call the word, opportunity, ability, whatever, that Christ is with us, in us, however.
Yeah.
It, it's through the Spirit that we're being guided.
Yeah.
What I'm seeing there. So that, when, when Jesus finished with the death and he came back to life, he came back with a different capacity. Though he had it before he died, it was, it seems like it, it's much more so.
Yeah.
Now that God has, you know, brought him to his side, the Father, I mean.
He's been glorified, Jesus has been glorified and returned, returned to the Father. Remember, Jesus says before his death, he says, "I'm, I'm gonna be leaving you," right? "In a little while." It says in John fourteen, "But, but the Father will send in my place," right? "The Spirit, the parable, the helper," right? Which is the Holy Spirit. And, and it's interesting to say, to, to recognize that Jesus, we don't hear anything about Jesus's youth except for one case, when he's twelve years old. And he, he turns up missing from his, when his parents and, and friends go up to Jerusalem for a festival, and when they're on their way back, they notice that Jesus isn't around, and, and so they go back and they find him in the temple. And there is, he's sitting, he's standing before all these learned people, and they're amazed at the teaching that this twelve-year-old kid could do. And they say, you know, he says, "Why, why were you worried? Didn't you know you'd be, I'd be in my father's house?" That's the only, that's the only youthful story that we have about Christ. And then all of a sudden, he shows up at the age, somewhere between the ages of thirty and thirty-three, and his cousin John baptizes him, right? And it's only after that, that the Holy Spirit descends on him that his ministry and, and, and the gospel accounts pick up. So it speaks about the power of the Holy Spirit and the fact that, and you're right, Art, because not when, when, when Christ ascended into heaven, right? Then we got, what do we get after that? After, we get, we got the Pentecost, right? Which is the gifting of the Holy Spirit into the church, into the church. So, so that's where we get the continuation through that. All right. And then one more, we're in Romans five still, but this is a little bit later on, eighteen, nineteen. Consequently, right? So consequently means that this happens because of this happening. "Just as one trespass," read that as a sin, right? "Just as one trespass resulted in condemnation for all people." And they're talking about what? That's the fall in, of Adam and Eve? That's the one trespass that resulted in the condemnation of all people. So also, one righteous act resulted in justification and life for all people. That's the death, right? And resurrection of Christ. "For justice through the disobedience of the one man, the many were made sinners. So also through the obedience of one man, the many will be made righteous." So there you see the argument that Paul makes. But this is, this is a reflection of what Paul, who, this is probably about oh, probably sixty-five A.D., seventy A.D., somewhere in there, you know, Jesus died in thirty-three A.D. So, so, well, you know, within the first forty years of the church, this is what, this is what a leader of the church said, that this is, this was the meaning of what Christ did. So that's important. All right, here's somebody who has had this comment. And this is a person by the name of Matthew Henry. Now, you can, for free, you can download Matthew Henry's commentary. This Matthew Henry wrote in the seventeen hundreds, a whole commentary on the Bible, every single book. And it's one of these things that you can get for free, if you just look on the internet. He's pretty good, you know? It's one of the things that when I'm preparing to preach, you know, I'll quite often say, I wonder what Matthew Henry thought about this in the seventeen hundreds. So it can be, but it's written in Old English, so it can be a little dry. Tell you that. So this is what he says about the atonement. "Receiving the atonement is our actual reconciliation to God in justification, grounded upon Christ's satisfaction. We Christians, we believers, have now, now in gospel times, or now in this life, received the atonement which was typified by the sacrifices under the law, and is in earnest of our happiness in heaven." What does that mean? So, we've received, or this, this atonement is our reconciliation of God and justification, and it's done because Christ satisfied what God needed in that. And therefore, right? That's not just in gospel times, but also for us right now, that we're receiving the benefits of that atonement. And then if we wanted to know how that atonement works, we can look at the Old Testament, especially under the law, and we can see that this is something, this is how God required that sin, brokenness from God, would be healed. Let's talk about the Old Testament. The first five books of the Bible, right? Everybody, we say that they were written by Moses, but whether or not they were written by Moses or not, in all or in part, we do know that they've been used by the Hebrew people from very, very early on, right? And that we have also appropriated them in our, in our Christian walk, and we say that those are, that they are, that they are, that they're authoritative books, they're scriptural books of the Word of God also. And so we know that atonement is often used in the Old Testament as a term. It represents a sacrifice for sin. So a sacrifice, something that's given up so that sin might be covered. And if we have, look at Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy, here's the problem. We all say that we wanna read the Bible, so we start from the beginning, and we read Genesis, and we say, okay, this is pretty cool, I can get through this. And then Exodus says, all right, well, there's a lot of reputation here, but I can get through this. And then we go Numbers, and go, listen, we've heard this story before, because it's kind of a repeat, right? Of what we found in, and then Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, oh, Leviticus. All of a sudden, we're just saying, this is all, you know, if, if you, if you, if you do this, you must, must do this. There's six hundred and fourteen laws that are in, that's in it. And usually, this is where people's excursion of trying to read the Bible stops at this point, because it just, you find yourself falling asleep all the time. So if you're ever doing that, you do yourself a favor, just skip Leviticus and just continue on, right? And you can, and you'll be a little bit more successful. So, but in Leviticus, in the sixteenth chapter, right? It describes specific atonement on many levels for many actions, because we find out that there's different levels of sin. And we can find, and there's, it's quite detailed about what you had to do to cover sin. And sometimes sin was just as simple as the fact that you were, you had touched something that was considered to be unholy, and you had to, you had to go off and wash yourself. The interesting thing is, is when we take a look at this, is that there's a number of these things, which we say that they're, they're holy, and they have spiritual aspects to them, but there's off, an awful lot of them that are health-related, right? The dietary laws about not mixing, you know, milk and blood. Those things, if we can see that in the times where there, there wasn't, there was, there wasn't any refrigeration, that it would also result in people avoiding disease if they followed a lot of the kosher dietary laws. So God was looking out for people even with that, he made it into laws for the, for that. And they needed to do these things in order to stay clean, ritually clean, right? So that God would recognize them. And they, they've always considered themselves to be the children of God, right? They were set apart, right? And that they needed to do these things to continue to stay as the people of God. So, in the Old Testament, there's a priestly, right? We say that Aaron was the brother of Moses, right? And so we say that, that, that was the priestly clan of the twelve tribes, right? And it says, "Aaron shall offer the bull as a sin offering for himself, and shall make atonement for himself and for his house." That would be for the entire priestly clan, right? So, but that's the only place, so, so that was just called out for the priestly thing. So in order for them to cover their sins, they had to offer a bull as a sacrifice at the altar. And then you have regu, regular people, right? And so a lot of times goats were there, or dogs sometimes, right? Other, other animals. The goat offering for the sins of the people, and the specific one, again, this follows right after the, the bull offering for, for Aaron. "Then he shall kill the goat of the sin offering, that is for the people, and bring its blood inside the veil, and do with its blood as he did with the blood of the bull, sprinkling it over the mercy seat and in front of the mercy seat. Thus he shall make atonement for the holy place because of the uncleanliness of the people of Israel, and because of their transgressions, all their sins." So this is, they're taking it into the holiest of the holies, the, the, before the temple, this was, this was the tabernacle, right? The tent where the Ark of the Covenant would be. This was the dwelling place of God, and then after, after the temple was built under Solomon, that it was in the Holy Holies, which was there. So this veil, it was always covered. Only the priests would go in, if somebody other than a priest would go in, they would die, right? There's even, there's even a story that when they would send in a priest for the first time, a young, you know, a young man that they lifted up into the priesthood, and then now this is like, okay, now you're gonna go into the Holy Holies for the first time. They would tie a rope around his waist, just to make sure that something happened, they could get back out again, so. So that we, and we can tell, from the Ark of the Covenant, we said that there's a mercy seat, that there was actually, it looked like two wings of angels, right? That surrounded a seat. This is the seat of God, and that they would sprinkle blood on it. Now, here's the interesting thing. Now, here's the interesting thing. At that time, you would think with all this blood and all this meat and everything, that it had a smell pretty bad, but what we're told is that it was very fragrant, it was, um, there was just a, a, an amazingly pleasing odors that would come off of this. And there was no, there was no rotting meat, there wasn't anything, it was just mysteriously done. Not so later on, when people continued to do after the, uh, the temple had been razed and then rebuilt. Um, that they said, wait, so we, you know, we're getting into the, a lot of, a lot of problems here, so that's when the sacri- that, that's when sacrificing stopped. And it can be said, well, then God just wasn't, God wasn't present there in the temple anymore. Okay. So we have priests, then we have the ordinary people. Now, this was for sins, these were for things that were done against God, but there was other, there, you know, there was other, uh, breaking of the law that would, that, again, as I said, doves could be used, um, lambs were considered to be, um, above the goat as far as that. And we're going to talk about that in just a second. But sometimes they have objects, right? Um. There are just a couple examples of purification rituals for inanimate objects. They're saying, look, you need to do this because we need to make this holy, we need to remove it, remove from it anything, um, that would, that might be a stain on that. And you're thinking, well, why is this? Well, remember that there was a lot of other tribes of people that had other religious beliefs that were in the area, and that that the, the, um, history of the nation of Israel is about when they interacted with these people, and that their, their religion would be pulled into the other religion, and it would become mixed. And God said, this, that's, you can't have that. So this would be these, uh, these, uh, purification rituals for that. All right. So we'll move to the New Testament. Right here, I mentioned this here. We only see atonement one, and that was in Romans five eleven, which we read. And then really, when we, but we'll see reconciliation an awful lot. Um, and so that, that is, it means the same thing. All right.
Could I ask a question about this?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, um. This, um, thing popped into my mind, there was a, a general who had some type of a disease, and he wasn't part of the Israelites, but he came to the prophet uh, that was in, at that point in time. And his attitude was kind of not cool. Uh, he was arrogant. But after he was, uh, cured, um, because he did what, uh, the prophet had requested him to do.
Right, he went and washed the river.
Uh, he said to the, to the prophet, he said, will you pray to your God that when I'm back in the kingdom he's at, that he would forgive me when I bow to these idols that my king worships? And, and it reminded me of grace and mercy at that point, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I do remember that, I'm trying to remember if that was in First or Second Kings, one of those stories, but. Yeah, it was, um, he told him to go and bathe in the river. Seven times, I think. And, uh, and he had his own prophets, and, and who were like, they were, they were put to shame, so they think it was leprosy, so. Yeah, it was. Here, we're hearing some. We're hearing some weird sounds here. Are you coming, are you coming, Laura? That's right, yeah, I hope I got everything right. So anyway, but, but yeah, so, um, thi- this. They, they call syncretic is the word that's used. When two things are close to one another, right, that they don't say separate, they start, they just kind of pull from one another, and that's, but that was the consistent problem uh, with, with the religion of, of ancient Israel, is the fact that, you know, even though when we read in Exodus, they said, you go in and you vanquish the country, you kill everybody that's there. We know in actuality that didn't happen, so that there was a lot of, uh, intersection. Um, and, um, and so that, and that led, and that led to God making judgments, saying, hey, you know, um. You, you, you're, you're counting on your relationships with other people and with other countries more, as much or more than you are with me, and that's not cool. The meaning of atonement here in this, uh, uh, this New Testament, our Christian aspect is this. Says that Adam, you know, it's the story of Adam and Eve, and subsequently, because that passed on to all of us, because we were tossed out of the perfection of the garden, and so we're in this world now that's got some physical laws that have been set up. Our choice to sin made everyone guilty before God without hope. Right, because we couldn't save ourselves. There just wasn't any way we could. But then Christ stepped in, making atonement for sin. And Christ was the sinless lamb, and the lamb, the, 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 the lamb without imperfections, right? Would, would have been, uh, the, the atonement that was made on Yom Kippur, the day of atonement. And he took upon himself the sins of many, that they might receive the atonement for sins and be reconciled to God. So now we have a better understanding of that. So when we accept that. When we accept that Christ atoned for our sin, right? Think about this. Because if we accept it, it means that we're acknowledging that we have sin in our own lives. Not just inherited sin, but we have actions. And, um, we've taken actions in our own relationships that sin against not only God, but what God's intention is for us. And when we, when we acknowledge that, we're also receiving the benefit of what Christ sacrificed. And then not only that, but then to live in a grace-filled life of abundance. So we've lifted ourselves up out of that pit. Not only now have we been made okay, but now we're lifted up, right? And we're living within the spirit, and we're going to find out that we have blessings. And blessings don't necessarily mean money. But it just means that we're given an abundance of things so that we can follow that light of Christ. And that there is no more barrier between the believer and God, for they have received Christ's atoning power and God's satisfaction of acceptance through that atonement, and thus reconciliation. This is another example of where the Protestant church and the Catholic church are different. We say in the Protestant church that we believe in the priesthood of all believers, and actually, if you read the Catholic, the latest Catholic stuff, they, they say it also. But we've always said that, you know, um. The min- a minister in the Protestant church, we don't hold any, any special office, other than the fact that we've been gifted um, by God, and that we, for instruction, right? We don't serve in any capacity to forgive sin. Right? Or to act as an intermediary between God and, and God's own people. And of course, the Catholic church feels differently about that, the, the priest, uh, actually acts as an intermediary, yeah, in that. So it's a major difference between the two churches. Our Jewish brethren, right? And, and this, and so this is also what's happening, uh, at the time of Christ. The most, the highest holiday of the Jewish faith is not, you know, it is, um, um, is not Hanukkah. Right? But it's the day, Hanukkah is actually a pretty minor, uh, minor holiday for them. But the major holiday is the day of atonement, which is Yom, right? Which is a day, and Kippur, which means atonement. And it usually happens in September, October, I think it's September eighteenth this year, right? Um, and it's what it is, it's, it's ten days of awe, right? That follows Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year. And that day of atonement is when, um, in the days of old, that, uh, they would deliver the lamb offering. It's the sixty, September sixteenth this year. Um. So it's on Yom Kippur, according to the Jewish tradition, that God decides each person's fate. So Jews are encouraged to make amends and to ask for forgiveness for sins committing during the past year. And it's observed with a twenty-four hour fast and a special religious service. Yom Kippur and Yom Ashan are known as Judaism's high holy days, that's the ten days between the Jewish New Year and Yom Kippur. Now, um, I have, um, I have some friends, some really, really good friends that are Jewish. One of them, uh, was our corporate attorney when I worked for the rubber company, and his name was Peter Ehrenberg, and he's a great friend of mine. In fact, he wrote me a letter of recommendation for me to go to, to seminary. And, um, I have now heard from two seminaries that they were like, the fact that you've got a Jewish attorney to write you a recommendation to a Christian seminary made me really stand out, what's the? But Peter, Peter is, um, and he's, he's renewed his vows in Judaism, and so we've had some wonderful discussions. But I can remember, I remember we were dealing with a legal issue, and, um, we were trying to, we were trying, somebody was trying to take advantage of us and make a legal claim against us that this wasn't there. And Peter said, well, we can fight this through the courts, or he says, or I can call up the, the, this person's attorney and tell him, look, if you continue to do this, this is what we're going to do. And, uh, not that it was blackmail, but it was kind of, you know, was, it was, look, you want to play these cards? These are the cards that, that we've got, that we're holding, that we don't think you want to play this game anymore. And so I said, Peter, isn't that, isn't that kind of unethical? He goes, well, he says, I'll just have to say a few more prayers on this day of atonement this year, so. We get through that. All right, so now, it's already after eight o'clock, ten after eight. And, um, so I'm going to check, I'm going to touch on something. You'll see a picture there before you of a clergy person. And that is a Swedish clergy person by the name of Gustav Olden. And Gustav, um, um. Was a learned Lutheran minister. And his most famous work was Kristus Victor. That's, here's his book right here, it was published in English in nineteen thirty-one. And this has become the standard text, and it's not that thick, so if you wanted to get into it, you could read it. Um, and it's provided the historical overview on this, on the theories of atonement from the earliest church, right, up until, oh, I'm going to say probably late eighteen hundreds. And I'm presenting them to you to show you that, how, what's going on in our lives, and how we use religion changes sometimes how we talk about atonement. All right, so the first one was he, what he called the classic view of atonement. And this was not what we just read about in Romans, right? This is, this was, that was, that was Peter's talking about the separation of man and God, and what God, and, and what, and what, um, Jesus was doing. But then we find out that a little bit later on, through the early church fathers, we start to see this coming up, and it's called the classic view, and it's also known as the ransom view, okay? And what this said was because evil had started to show up as something that needed to be explained. So maybe it was, maybe that was, uh, a buzzword at the time. So they're saying, well, what Christ was doing was, yes, he was separate, he was, he was, uh, he was, uh, you know, clearing the separation of God and humans, but what he was also, what he was really doing, right? Was that he was paying a ransom. Since Satan, the devil, had caused the fall, right? That they needed to pay him off. And that God gave of himself in Jesus Christ to pay that off, to redeem humanity. So he sent Christ as a ransom or a bait, so that the devil, not knowing that Christ couldn't die permanently, would kill him. And thus lose all right to humanity following the resurrection. So what Christ, this is also known as the, the victory in Christ, right? Um, which, so. Christ is killed. He descends into hell, right, where the devil takes that payment. And he thinks now that he's now, you know, he, he, he's, he's got, um, he's got control out of all the, the entire human race now, right? But he doesn't count on the resurrection. He doesn't have any power against that. Then a little bit later on, we start to see a little bit change to it. And this is known, if the other one was the ransom theory, this is the satisfaction theory. And that says that their guy by the name of Ansel, uh, Ansel, uh, says this, that Christ suffered as a substitute on behalf of humankind. And by doing so, he satisfied the demands of God's honor. And then the Protestant church, starting in the fifteen hundreds, took this, right? And, and declared it as what they called penal substitution. Right, now, penal meaning penalty, right? So it's the, it's the, it's a substitute penalty for us, we deserve it, but Christ took it on, right? And that way that, you know, that he's, he's done that. Now, this is something that is probably been taught, I would, I would say, if we took a poll, the, the majority of us would say, yeah, that's what I was taught, right? That Christ stood in for our place on the cross. So now we move a little bit further ahead, and this is what, this is what Ullin was working with, right? Because he's working at his time, and this is in the nineteen twenties. It's a world that, um, has just come out of World War One. Which was the war to end all wo- wars, and the inhumanity and the destruction and the death that was seen was just unbelievable, it was just, it was something that the world had never seen before. So there was a whole strand of theology that developed out of that. And this is what we see, it's, it's called the moral influence view, right? Which starts to make, put more agency on what we do. And so what we're saying is, well, it was really what it was, is that it was, and it was an act of exemplary obedience, right? And through that, we should learn about the intentions of the goodness of Christ and what we should do. Right? So it's the moral influence. And so then to, just to put this into a little bit better time capsule, he said that the classic view was predominantly the view of the early church for the first thousand years of church history. And I would maintain that we've seen that probably in the first hundred years, it wasn't, right? That there was just a, it was very much a direct Christ paying the penalty for us. And then when the, the satisfact, that this ransom theory, um, came into being, it was only, uh, when we start to see that as we push towards the Middle Ages. And then it was supported by nearly every church father, and there's, there's a list of them, right? And then he says that it, it changes in about ten ninety-seven. Because Anselm of Canterbury, which is in England, all right? He comes into this fact, and he brings into the satisfaction view. The Orthodox Church, which is the Eastern Orthodox Church, still, this is, that's, that, that they still hold to this. I think that's it. No, we don't need to do that one. So I'm going to get down here. So. If we were successful tonight. We've encouraged you to take a step back, right? And realize that sometimes the first things that we think about and the way that we see things is because it's our context, it's what we're going through, it's our experiences that color it. And that we need to sometimes pull back so that we can see that there's other, um, there's other lights that are shining on that too, and we need to understand that this Christ event was for all of those things, right? So the fact that we put three separate ones, I'm not telling you that one is, one is right and the others are wrong. It could be doing all of those things, right? That's the mystery of God, because God is greater than anything that we can imagine. And ultimately, what was going on in the cross was God deciding that I needed, he needed to do this for God's self. Right? So that we were given the freedom to live under God's grace. So whatever was happening. It was perfect because it was done by God, right? It was done for us. And then we have to have faith in that and to believe that, that, that uh, that we don't need to go back and do that ever again. And, and if we can do that. Then we can stop worrying about the things that we've done in our past and making, and, and thinking that we're unworthy. Right? For being loved, uh, that past mistakes are gonna prevent us from ever doing anything good again. Um, that, that we can wipe that out and we can concentrate on taking the capability that God has given us. And we, each one of you, each one of you has been given some unique gift by God. That God's just saying, are you gonna find it and are you gonna develop it to the, to the fullest extent of what you can do it? And that gift, right, that gift is gonna be in some way. Serving others. And you're gonna find it in the most unlikely places. Sometimes in the depths of pain, we find out. What our God-given gift is. But we have that freedom through Christ to explore that. Who else is, anybody have any comments, questions? I just blew Carrie's mind again, huh?
Hold on, I'm down for all, I'm down for all of it.
I'm with Carrie. My mind's exploding too.
Yeah. Like, I'm, I feel like I wanna throw up, kinda.
But it was excellent.
Yes.
Yeah.
How wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, very, very good. My stomach hurts.
My mind's going.
I got all this stuff floating through my mind. Spin in here, where's atonement, forgiveness?
We do it, I mean. The whole purpose here is that we, you know, that, that we're gonna, we wanna make Easter. Just the most awesome thing that we've ever experienced.
And we're not gonna appreciate it unless we take the trip to get there.
Yeah.
And it's so easy to get lost in butter shaped like lambs and bunnies and all kinds of crazy stuff, but when you take this road.
Hey, guy. Hey, see ya.
Hi, guy.
So um, yeah, so we're finishing up with the same number of, of people, not the same, but the same number of people as what we started with. So that's a cool thing.
Shout out to our friends watching on Facebook too.
Oh, how many people we have?
Um, we've had three to four, so that's average for Facebook.
So I wanna thank everybody and, you know, but think about this and you're gonna have questions. So um, when you do, just drop them to me. And uh, we'll go through. But as I said, the biggest thing to understand is the fact that uh, if somebody says that this is what God was doing. In Jesus Christ on the cross. You can say, yes, he was doing that and he was also doing this, doing that, doing this. Yes, Beth.
Just one question now, cause this is sort of interesting. I always thought Yom Kippur became, um, wait. Yom Kippur's a new year, no, Rosh Hashanah is a new year. So Last Supper was really probably on um, Rosh Hashanah.
No, it was Passover.
Okay, alright, you're right. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I got the holidays on.
Which is another high holiday, but the highest holiday, the highest holidays are Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur.
Right, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Those were in the fall. Okay, I got it now.
Don't try to, what, this is gonna sound so bad. I don't, I shouldn't say, okay, I'll say it, but. Um, but the um, um, so as I said. Our corporate attorney, right, this firm, uh, Peter Ehrenberg. Um, he was Jewish, but I always used to tell people, I said, when, when's Rosh Hashanah? And they tell me, I said, well, let, get all your stuff to Peter before then, because we're. He was very observant. We knew that in those ten days, we were not gonna, we're not gonna see anything. He would work. Um, he would work from sunrise to sunset and then that was it. That was it, so.
Now, I have Jewish friends. It's, it's very serious, very, very serious.
Hey, Tim.
Yes.
This is Margot, um. So when I was thinking about tonight's um, Bible study. And this can be a weird story. I was thinking more about the word sacrifice than the word atoning. And um. So here's, this is just weird, but, so I'm, I'm vegetarian. And the reason is because um, I don't appreciate food. I don't like to be hungry. But that the only reason I eat is so that I'm no longer hungry. The only food I appreciate is um, potato chips and ice cream. So um, so when I used to eat meat. I, it finally occurred to me, there's this animal dying. In order that I won't be hungry anymore and I'm totally not appreciating. Um, the, the fact that this animal had to die so that I wouldn't be hungry. So because I wasn't appreciating that, I quit eating meat. Um, and so to kind of bring it around to the whole Jesus thing. Jesus already died, so it's not like I can say, Jesus, don't do that. I may not appreciate it. As much as you might want me to, but he already did that, so now I have to. Like remind myself to be appreciative of what he did, you know?
Hmm, absolutely. The um, you know, and by, and, and so, cause we're humans. I mean, we're constructed and, and um. You know, there's a, what was it? Maslow's Theory. Have you, anybody heard of Maslow's Theory? It was really big back in the seventies. You know, they used it in corporate psychology, but basically what it says is there's a pyramid. And in order to self-actualize, in order to, to reach the pinnacle of this period pyramid where. Um, you are, you are just completely aware of your surroundings and you're working at maximum efficiency and everything. Is that you needed to fulfill all these lower levels and it starts off with like food, shelter and clothing. Right? If you don't have those things, you can't, you can't do anything other than be concerned about those. And then you go up to the next one, which would be relationships. You know, you need, you need caring and loving relationships. And if you have those, you move up to the next level to get to the point where you're really comfortable in your own skin, right? And, and there, and therefore then you can start to see interconnections. And inner relationships of things and you can make uh, decisions and make plans that, that truly. Catapult results well beyond anything. So it was Maslow's Theory of Self-Actualization. And um. What we found out was that although it was good, um, nobody's life is perfect, right? You just, you never, you never got all of those layers that, that, that were there and yet we still had to move on and do things. So it kind of fell out of favor from that standpoint. But if we're thinking about that in terms of Christ, we're saying, you know, we don't need to worry about all of those lower levels. Because if we accept what Christ did, well then, now we can just concentrate on living up, up into these things here. Um, but what did Christ talk about? Right? And this is why, right? So here's another. This is why, right? Christ in Matthew twenty-five, right, says. It says that they come to Pete, they come to the king for judgment. He's gonna separate the people to the left and the right, like the goats and the sheep. And to the people on his right hand, he says, you know, when I was sick, you came and visited me. When I, when I was naked, you gave me clothes. When I was hungry, you gave me food. And they go, whoa, whoa, wait a second, we didn't, we, when did we do these things to you? We don't remember that. He says, truly, I tell you, whenever you do. This to the least of my people, you did it for me.
Right on.
Right? So. What Christ is saying, what that tells me is that, you know, we have enough. Here's the liberal Protestant in me. We have enough resources, God-given resources in this world that if we shared them, right? And didn't view them as moneymakers, but if we really viewed as food and shelter and health. As human rights and made sure that we had it, just think, if people didn't have to spend half their day. Thinking about how they were gonna gather enough food to feed their family. How much more we could accomplish. You know, and, and there's areas in Africa. Uh, where people do spend their whole day, just concentrating on trying, saying, how am I gonna get the food? And how am I gonna get wood to keep my family warm tonight? And um, and, and, and those things. So all of those things, right? If we, if we just use what God has already given us and that's in front of us and we learned how to share that. Just think about the things that we could accomplish beyond that. And I, I think if we do that, then we're manifesting elements of the kingdom. The kingdom.
I'm gonna ask you something.
Yeah.
So we're separated to the right and the left and the people on the right are doing the right thing and the people on the left are not. But they're also still forgiven by. Christ dying on the cross, right?
Well, God was perfect. What Christ did was perfect for everybody, but in order to participate that, it says that we have to have faith. So faith that there is a God and that faith that that God has fully forgiven us in the person and the work of Jesus Christ.
I have a good question about the Jewish people and, and the crucifixion and everything. Yeah, they believe in God, but they don't believe in Jesus, so they don't get in heaven.
Alright, so now you're gonna hear, this is what, this is what Tim thinks, right? So if you ask a Baptist ministry, saying, you're absolutely right, right? They're not, they're, they're not, they're not gonna be in heaven. This is what I think. I think that God can work in any way God wants to. And there's a Buddhist, there's a Buddhist saying that there are many pathways to the top of the mountain. Um, so I don't discount any religion and the fact that it can't bring people closer to God. But what I know is that for whatever reason, God chose to expose me to the channel that is available through Jesus Christ. So that's my way. That's my way. But I'm not gonna, I'm never gonna denigrate um, another religion. Uh, as long as that religion honors people, honors relationships, right? And has a belief that there, that there's a creator God.
That, that particular part that I shared earlier about that general. You know, and I, I, I thought about the various sacrifices that the people did in the Old Testament. And wasn't it an attitude of, of. Something other than just, I did this act? I mean, for the general. He, he didn't belong to these people. But God. Did extend. And, and I don't know, I, I, I really don't believe that God needs us. He chooses to use us. Um, and. So, you know, just like you're commenting, how, how do you define? Wh- where God will go and how he will respond. He sees our heart. He knows what we think.
And he loves us no matter what.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and um. At the end of the day, it's up to God who's in and who's out. So um, God's a lot bigger and greater than I'm ever gonna be that I, than I ever wanna be and I'm gonna leave that to God. Right? I'm gonna let God figure that out. The only thing I know for sure is that when I get there, right? When I get there, I am sure that there's gonna be some people going, oh. How do they get it? And maybe I'll be, no, and maybe it'll be made known to me, you know, what, what, what the thing really is, but I will, you know. Um, Jesus. He, we're reading through in our daily devotionals, we're reading through the book of Romans, right? And we spent uh, too many days, but we spent an awful lot of days. And talking about um, the fact that, that um, Jesus is saying that he's moved the message, right? Out to the Gentiles, the non-Jewish people, because the, the Jewish people aren't getting it, right? So now he's, he's gone out and he's, he's adopted other children. And the purpose behind that is that he might draw the, the Jewish people, you know, back into that salvation. That's what, and, and, and Paul, as a Jew, is saying, you know, that's, that's what he hopes. That's what he hopes and, and um, so. Regardless of that, cause you know, that at the time. This Christianity was not considered to be anything other than it was, it was an element, a sect of, of Jew. Just like, just like the Pharisees were a sect of the Hebrew faith, uh, the Essians were, were a sect. Um, all of the, the Sadducees were a sect, they're kind of basically different denominations within it. Just like we have, you know, Catholics and Lutherans and Methodists and Episcopalians and Presbyterians. Orthodox, Pentecostals, Baptists, right? All of those things. I mean, we all, we all have different ways of worshiping and understanding, but we worship the same God. Worship the same God. And, and Jesus says, art. As the woman who comes to him and wants, wants him to heal her child and she's not Jewish. And he says, he almost tests her. He said, you know, hey, I'm, I'm here to, I'm, I'm here to save the Jewish people. And she says, but doesn't, don't even the dogs get the crumbs from the master's table? In other words, and he looks at her and he says, truly, you know, your faith has made you, your child is healed. So it wasn't that he was saying that it wasn't, it was almost like he was. Our understanding of that is he's, it's the faith. It's the faith that Christ could heal, right? That saved that, rather than it was the lineage of the person that was coming through. She wasn't Jewish. She had another faithful. Alright. You guys had enough for tonight?
A lot to think about.
Good, good. That's what, sometimes I say stuff just to make people think.
You're very good at it.
So anyway, but we'll be on at nine tomorrow morning for devotionals, right? And then um, we'll be back. Now, next, next Wednesday is Holy Week. So uh, our, our Bible study is actually gonna be the kickoff to a lot of our observations in Holy Week. Which, you know, will continue on with Monday, Thursday and Good Friday. And then Holy Saturday and then our, our Easter celebrations. So we're gonna take a look at the crucifixion itself, right? And um, um, I don't want, I mean, we can get as deep into it as we want to, but. Let's take a look at the different gospel accounts and how are they similar and how are they different? And um, and uh, what are those differences? What might those differences mean? Why, why, why aren't they exactly the same? You know, I'm gonna give you just a kernel, just a kernel. If, if, if you have a Bible, I hope you do. Um, look at um, look at Mark. Mark is considered to be the earliest gospel and go to the end of Mark, right, and see how it ends. And you'll see probably that there are, there might be two endings, right? Or there might be something that's in parentheses. Because the original ending of Mark, right, says that um. Do you want me to read it? Okay. Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. The way it goes.
Mark's the shortest one. It's the easiest one to read.
Oh, we think Mark is the earliest, we think Mark is the earliest gospel account, right? And we think that Luke and Matthew had Mark when they wrote, when they sat down. So that they kind of use that as a, as an outline. And then John is just so unique that, but we think that John's probably the later one. Okay, and if I'm looking at this one, right, and um. Okay, in my study Bible, it has the shorter ending of Mark and the longer ending of Mark. So it's sixteen. Nine through twenty. So it's sixteen nine through twenty, right? Is the longer ending, so when you're looking at that, okay? That's, they they, when they look at all the different copies of Mark that's around, they can find just as many that don't have nine through twenty as do. Which means it's like, almost like that this was a later addition into. Okay, but and I'll let you look into that and we'll cover it a little bit, but if we take then a look at what what it, what does it say in one through eight? And it says, it talks about this is the resurrection appearances. And it says, um, when the Sabbath was over, Mary Magdalene and Mary, the mother of James, and Solon brought spices so that they might go and annoy him. And very early on the first day of the week, when the sun had risen, they went to the tomb. They had been saying to one another, who will roll away the stone for us from the entrance to the tomb? When they looked up, they saw that the stone, which was very large, had already been rolled back. As they entered the tomb, they saw a young man dressed in a white robe sitting on the right side and they were alarmed, but he said to them, do not be alarmed, you are looking for Jesus of Nazareth, Nazareth, who was crucified. He has been raised, he is not here. Look, there is a place they laid him, but go tell his disciples and Peter that he is going ahead of you to Galilee. There you will see him, just as he told you. So they went out and fled from the tomb. For terror and amazement had seized them, and they said nothing to anyone, for they were afraid. I told them. They said nothing to anyone, cuz they were afraid. So then we see, right, that um, there's some, then we get into the longer, you know, one.
So in these stories, normally Jesus tells them, don't tell anybody. And they go and they leave and they tell everybody.
Right.
And now he's telling Mary Magdalene, go tell everybody and they don't.
Did you just see the theological insight that my wife got in that?
Go, Mag! Love it.
Yeah, no, you're right, I mean, there throughout the God, you know, the gospels, Jesus said, he heals people and says, don't tell anybody. Of course, they go and tell somebody right away, right? Um, but here they are, you know, there, these people are told, go tell. And then they don't tell anybody, cuz they were terrified, they were afraid. So that's the shorter end and then if you continue to read on, and I'll leave that for you guys to look into, if you're interested. You know, take that tidbit and then look at, see that there was this, that was very early, but it was a later addition uh, into Mark. And then we compare with that with what we see with with Luke and with Matthew and with John, right? That talks about this, cuz here we've got, you know, we've got the walking and talking Jesus that shows up. And uh, and uh, but not so was Mark. So it's interesting. It's interesting, I don't know the meaning, but it's interesting. Alright, let's have a word of prayer and then we get on with our nights here. Lord, we thank you for this evening that you've given us. We thank you for the people that have gathered here and Lord, we we have a thirst to try to understand you better. Not so that we can control you, but rather so that we might have more of you in our life. How we can welcome you and the Holy Spirit uh, through our words, our actions, our thoughts, our deeds. And then, Lord, we're in the middle of Lent and as we near the end of it, uh, we we really, really want this Easter to be special. We want to have a a much deeper appreciation of what you did for us on that cross. And then also the power that was demonstrated in that resurrection. Lord, that was a perfect event. It was made to cover past offenses and current offenses and all future offenses. Which meant, which really means is that we can live uh, in the firm knowledge that you love us. And that you're really just looking out for us and that what we need to do is to trust in you and everything. And Lord, when we go through this life and sometimes we feel close to you, sometimes we feel very far away. And Lord, it's when those times, uh, in both of those times, that we wish that we would just rely more firmly on your love. So that when we feel away, we're drawn near. And when we feel close, we might take some of that energy and we might spread it to others. So Lord, uh, be with us. We thank you for these people who have gathered together and studied your word here tonight. And we just ask for your continued blessings. And we ask this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Very good. Thank you all, my Aunt Mary's saying goodbye.
My Aunt Mary, Linda Wolf, we see that you missed us tonight. You and Paul can watch on YouTube or rewatch the Facebook version, she commented on Facebook, they missed.
Oh, who's that?
Um, Linda and Paul Wolf, they can't believe they forgot about Bible studies, so they said they'll watch it, so shout out to Linda and Paul.
Hey, Carrie.
Yes.
Okay, on my phone, I can have, I I can hit and play the devotions for this morning, March twenty fourth. But I can, it comes to me afterwards, later than it actually occurs. But how do I get it at nine, how do I get it at nine o'clock? Can I go Facebook or can I go?
Go to the app.
You're gonna call me and I'm gonna do it for you, you call me and I'll help you tomorrow or now, whatever you want.
Alright, thank you, my dear.
You're welcome, always, anytime, anyone.
God bless all.
Bye, everyone, love you guys.
Love you, I love you all. Bye bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye bye.